This meeting of the Oak Park City Council is called to order. Welcome to ladies' night. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitehead. Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Radner. Councilmember Crawford.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. The consent agenda are routine items presented for approval without discussion as a single agenda item. Any member can wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it can be dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A, regular city council meeting minutes for April 21st, 2025. B, parks and recreation meeting minutes for February 19th and March 19th that are packed with amazing activities. C, request to schedule a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-26 annual budget for Monday, May 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. D, payment request from Frank Rewald &amp; Son for construction management services for the total amount of $13,000. E, approval of pay application number three, final, in the amount of $1,000 to Michigan Joint Ceiling Incorporated of Farmington Hills, Michigan, for the 2024 joint and crack ceiling project, M 765. And quite similar, F, approval of payment application number three, final, also in the amount of $1,000, also to Michigan Joint Ceiling Incorporated of Farmington Hills, for the 2023 joint and crack ceiling project, M 751. So they are different projects. G, payment of invoices from OHM Advisors for engineering consulting services for the total amount of $1,993.75. H, approval of payment application number two for the 2024-25 miscellaneous concrete project, which we all love because it means fixing some of those things that we've been complaining about. M 773 to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan, in the amount of $108,364.18. Aye, approval of pay application number four and change order number three in the amounts of $14,969.58 and $55,835.29 respectively to Taplin Group Limited of Kalamazoo, Michigan, for the 2024 sewer and catch basin cleaning and TV inspection project, M 774. J, approval of payment application number seven, final, for the 2023-24 miscellaneous concrete project, M 754 to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan, in the amount of $10,000. K, approval of pay application number one to DVM Utilities of Sterling Heights, Michigan, for the 2025 sewer lining project, M 777, in the amount of $171,311.60. L, request to approve payment application number four for the 2024 block pruning project, something else we all like to see, trimming those trees that we've asked for, to Lim Walkers Tree &amp; Snow Limited of Kenaki, Michigan, in the amount of $3,275. M, swimming pool use agreement between the city of Oak Park and the city of Southfield. We partner with a lot of other cities. N, new and renewal of licenses for May 5th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We don't have elected officials here that I see, but we do have a special presentation, and for that I'd like to invite, is Michelle Bishop here, our authorities manager who has brought so many amazing things to the city of Oak Park? And fun events that we've all come to, and she amazes us.
Good evening. We're here for the council, and then Mondays. I am Michelle Bishop, and I agree with Oak Park Corridor Improvement.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes.
Announce again.
I am Michelle Bishop, the Oak Park Corridor Improvement Authority Manager, and we are here tonight because we have one of our businesses, one of our small businesses, who has won the Main Street Connected Grant. This is the second time that we have won in the last year, which is actually very cool for our businesses. So this grant is part of a partnership between Main Street Oakland County, which we work very closely with, and the Michigan State Federal Credit Union. Our small businesses can apply for this grant, it's open twice a year, it's a matching grant up to $2,500, and they can use it with such things as marketing, software upgrades, website, or e-commerce support, cybersecurity. And I am happy to say that tonight, we're presenting a grant to Tori Webster with Best Friends Daycare, which has been a staple in Oak Park for a very, very long time, and she's going to be upgrading her customer relationship management software and kind of bolstering her marketing services. So I am going to bring up Ian Dunkinson, he's with the Michigan State Federal Credit Union, and I'm going to let him talk for a few minutes, and then Anika Norris is here from Main Street Oakland County to present the check.
Hi, thank you. Oh my gosh, being tall. Thank you all for having us back, excited to be back for the second time for the 2024 grant cycle. So this is where we're getting around to awarding the funds officially now, but just want to reiterate that MSU Federal Credit Union is really invested in our local communities in supporting small businesses, and especially through this program, Main Street districts that draw in lots of residents, lots of visitors, and make it a place where people want to not just live, but also come into the downtown spaces and, in this case, raise their little ones. And so I invite you, if you have not yet, to please check out msufcu.org. We invite you to become a member, anyone in Michigan is eligible, and we do offer business and personal accounts and services as well. And then on the note of the next grant cycle, we're actually gearing up to open the next cycle of grants for 2025, next Monday, so stay tuned for that, for businesses who might be interested in applying. And congratulations to Best Friends on receiving this check.
It is wonderful that the bank is doing something to help small business, and we're delighted that an Oak Park business won. Where are you located?
So our closest branch to here is in Berkeley, at the corner of 11 Mile and Coolidge, and then we have eight branches here in southeast Michigan, a total of 26 in the state of Michigan. And we're also part of a broader shared network for folks who may not be, may not have a branch right in their backyard, but the Berkeley one's pretty close to here, I would say.
All right. Thank you for coming and for providing us with support for our small business.
It's my pleasure, our pleasure.
Anika Norris? From Main Street, very active in Oak Park, a Main Street representative who has worked with us a lot.
Yes, my name is Anika Norris, I'm the liaison for the Main Street Oakland, for, yeah, for Main Street Oakland County and the Oak Park Coordinating Program here. So we're just thrilled that Duncan and Michigan State, or Duncan, sorry, and Michigan State Federal Credit Union have worked with us to provide these grants, because they only go to people that are within the districts of the Main Street program, and just super happy to be able to work together as a team to fill in this gap, to provide funds for technical services, different types of technical things.
Because every small business needs that.
Exactly.
Hard to find the money for it.
Exactly. So if we could maybe get a picture to have everyone?
Absolutely. Do we all go down? We should all go down, okay.
Hi, can you hear me? Is the mic on? Okay. Hi, my name is Tori Webster, I'm the owner of Best Friends Early Childhood Education Center. I'm located at 8430 West 9 Mile, and I found out about this program through Michelle. She's really excellent at keeping us informed at all the opportunities that are available through the city and through the county. She's also a great support for any issues that I may have, or any of us in the business corridors that may have any sort of situation that we're facing with our businesses, and super supportive if we're experiencing any hardships. So we really appreciate Michelle.
Michelle ran her own small business, so she knows where you guys live.
Yeah, yeah, she definitely, she's always right on it for all of us. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank MSU Federal Credit Union, the city of Oak Park, and Main Street Oakland County for selecting me for this grant. What I used it for was social media engagement, I knew that I had a great program, was struggling to get the word out to the community, and so this grant allowed the funding to hire or partner with GoDaddy to handle my social media marketing, I'm busy running the business, so it's hard for me to manage the social media end. And so there, they've been sending out blasts and ads and things like that weekly for me, and what ended up happening is, it went extremely well, and I was inundated with phone calls, messages through my website, people showing up at my door asking for enrollment, and so it led to me realizing I needed a CRM, because I wasn't able to keep up with how fast the inquiries were coming in, who was who, what were their needs, how old were their child, because I have now inquiries and reservations into 2026 for moms that are just a few months pregnant. And so I was able to come back to Michelle and Main Street Oakland County and say, hey, this went really, really well, I need this other piece of software to help me manage, you know, this influx of business increase that I now have. And they did permit me the additional funds, so I was extremely grateful for that other help with that other component, because it was critical, so I could follow up with those leads, and the software allows me to capture that information and automate some of those processes, so again, I'm not stuck on the computer responding to everyone individually, it kind of handles some of that for me, so I can get the families in for the tours and get those reservations, so it's been a great success.
Wow.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
She ought to do a training for other businesses.
Exactly.
Thank you, yeah, congratulations, and having so much business interest that you can't handle it is quite the problem to have, it's like, the bride is too beautiful, it's not a problem. Thank you. That was wonderful. Now, we are awarding bids for the 2025 Event Hub project in the total amount of $2,372,337. Who is going to speak to this? City Manager Eric Tungay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Dave DeCoster. Deputy City Manager, Municipal Services, sitting to my right, our city attorney's not here this evening, this is a biggie for us, so obviously this is the kickoff for our Event Hub project, so Dave, if you could, take it away and explain what we're doing.
Yes, thank you, and good evening to the mayor and city council. On behalf of the city manager, I'm here tonight to report on the bids for the 2025 Event Hub project. You may remember, at the November 4th, 2024, regularly leading the Oak Park City Council, the request to bid the project was approved, the project was advertised, and on April 29th, 2025, bids were received and opened. Tonight, we are looking for approval on five of the bid scopes, they include earthwork and site utilities, fencing, concrete foundations, structural steel, and electrical. It is recommended that the city council award these project scopes for the 2025 Event Hub project in the total amount of $2,372,337. As I noted, these approvals are only a portion of the bid categories within the project, the remaining bids are still being evaluated, and the contractors are still being interviewed. The remaining bid categories and approvals, as well as the project guaranteed maximum price, will be presented at a future city council meeting. Funding is available in the Parks and Recreation Improvement Fund, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Dave, I actually, Madam Mayor, if I could, Dave, I have a question, so one of the things I wanted to point out was the bid, and I think it was almost entirely in an effort to expedite the project, but the bid is, council members coming in a little bit of a piecemeal format to you. I was hoping you could.
Yeah, yeah, correct, so we are looking for a much larger award, most likely the next city council meeting. As the city manager alluded to, there are some significant lead times in some of these items, regards to this project, especially with structural steel and electrical. So soon after the bids were opened last Tuesday, myself and our construction manager began to interview the apparent low bidders for each of these categories. We are all comfortable with them, they've confirmed their bid numbers, and at this point, we're prepared to award it to these vendors only, again, mainly because of the long lead times associated with their work. We will continue the interviewing process over the next two weeks, and hopefully, if all goes well, we will bring the remainder of the project awards back to you on May 19th.
So first, before questions, we need a motion to award the bids for the 2025 Event Hub project in the total amount of $2,372,337 to the five awardees selected.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions, City Manager Eric Tungay.
So Dave, I was hoping you could just elaborate just a little bit more in terms of where does, I mean, obviously, the earthwork site utility part of this is a huge, you know, pre-development part of this. When in your estimation can we begin that work? I know council members, we're also targeting May 28th at 10:00 AM, I think, for our official groundbreaking ceremony, and we'll be advertising that very soon, but as far as some of these, you know, the fencing, the earthwork, you know, obviously getting structural steel on order is huge, but when do you see, actually seeing equipment over on the site over here?
Yeah, sure, so obviously, earthwork and site utilities is one of the first things we're going to do, we want to secure them, we want to make sure their equipment is ordered, get on their schedule. The first, one of the first things you'll do is see excavators out on site, bulldozers on site, balancing the site, and getting the pad ready for the actual Event Hub. The next part is the fencing, that's, I guess, realistically, that's the first thing you're going to see, is contemporary construction fencing going up to surround the site to make it safe. That earthwork and site utilities will follow up, again, concrete foundations, we need to get those concrete foundations in place so we can build on them, and then again, the structural steel and electrical components are just the long lead time items. Masonry and some other things will come before that structural steel, but we want to make sure the structural steel is ordered, and we can have it on site when we need it. So we anticipate, we're still working through a little bit of scheduling, but I would anticipate in the next two to three weeks, you're going to start seeing some action out there, we're working on getting that temporary fence up and installed as soon as possible, and as the city manager mentioned, at this point, we're tentatively scheduled for May 28th at 10:00 AM for groundbreaking. We are still working on a couple kinks with some contractors, but that is a tentative date as of right now.
Exciting.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, I have one more question, Dave. And maybe this is too soon for you to be able to speak to this, but in your estimation, as the city's project lead on the Event Hub project, are these costs coming in line with where you thought they would be, or are we slightly below, slightly above, where are we at?
I think it's a little bit too early to tell as we continue this interview process, but with these five scopes here, and some of the other ones that we've started looking at, I believe we're right on line with the opinion of cost, the last opinion of cost that we received during the design development phase, so I think we're going to be really close to that number. Obviously, we'll do a great job managing to make sure any extras and things are approved, and make sure they're going through the correct process, but I think we're right on track right now.
Are there any surprises so far, though, that?
Not as of yet, no.
Okay.
We did see a couple scopes that came in a little bit lower, but as always, we're going to see a couple higher, and I think overall, we're in a good place.
Thank you.
Okay, any city council questions about this project?
I just have one question about this.
Councilmember Juliet.
So the steel that will be used for this project, is it already here, will it be subject to tariff? Are we locking it in right now, pre-tariff?
So when we interviewed our vendor, they won't lock anything until we award, so the first thing tomorrow morning we'll do is we'll get an award out to them, and what that does is they'll lock it in with their vendors, who will create the steel, create per our specs, per our building, and then we will lock it at that point. We don't have any reason to believe that since last week to tomorrow, there'll be any change in pricing, they've stood by their price, and they stand by their subcontract that creates a steel for them, so I do not see any issues with steel. This project is a BABA project, Build America by America, so basically, every product in this product is a Build America product. There are some contingencies that you can look at, but steel, electrical, and all the components are Build America, so we should not see any issues.
I want to add to that, so this goes back to council members, you may recall, when we had to go back out and make some amendments to the original proposal, so that we could get these products from American sources as opposed to anything overseas, so to comply with that, so, and that was done in the last administration, by the way, it's not this current one, not that it matters, but.
Okay, great.
We ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes, motion carried, thank you. Next, we have item nine on the agenda, which is ordinances. We need to approve first reading, and this is long, of proposed text amendments to the city of Oak Park zoning ordinance in the following sections, Article 1, Division 2, Article 2, Division 2, Article 2, Division 3, Article 2, Division 4, Article 3, Division 1, Article 3, Division 2, Article 4, Division 1, Article 4, Division 2, Article 4, Division 3, Article 4, Division 4, Article 5, Division 1, Article 5, Division 2, Article 5, Division 3, Article 5, Division 4, Article 5, Division 5, and finally, Article 6, Division 1. We need a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, speak of angels and hear the flutter of their wings. We have Economic Development Director Kim Maroney here to answer questions. I had, just from reading over all of these various things, a lot of them are just clean up the text and correct the small errors, but some of them actually dealt with new things. There was a little bit about hookahs, and I thought when they came to Oak Park that we had a closing at midnight requirement, or a closing time, is that correct?
Yeah, and that is still accurate, Mayor, the main change in the hookah ordinance was the restriction on age, which was a change in the state law, so we're reflecting the change in the state law there.
And what's the new age?
It is 21, not 18.
Huh. Okay, and there's something about cocktail lounges that was for Hanson's Hall, probably, and others similar.
Do you remember which specific one that was?
Were there changes?
There were so many changes, I want to make sure that I answer correctly.
I didn't. 110?
Section 110, oh, that was adding the definition for a cocktail lounge, we did not have that in our current definition for our ordinances, so we wanted to make that specifically clear, for anybody who questioned it, that there was an actual definition.
City Manager Tungay.
Director Maroney, I was hoping, I think one of the most substantial parts of the zoning ordinance that's being changed, and I think personally, I think it's much in favor of development in the city, but it is regarding the parking requirements in the city. And so could you speak about that a little bit, and I know in section, I think it's 531, nope, I just had it, but we talked about the planning commission, or the city planner can reduce, or can negotiate with a development for parking spaces, so that they don't have to meet a requirement that would prohibit the development from taking place?
Yeah, so in our ordinance, we allow for a reduction of up to 50% of the parking spaces that the city planner or planning commission can approve, and we added the language of city planner, so that on administrative reviews, that does not require planning commission approval, they can make that judgment call, and it doesn't have to wait to go to the planning commission. Administrative review type projects is an existing building that might just be a change in use, so for instance, maybe it was a manufacturing facility and it changed to a print shop, if it's a significant change in use, that just requires administrative approval, and what we do there is try and make it come into greater compliance for landscaping and dumpster enclosures and items like that. In the past, we only just did a business license for those. As far as the parking, the major parking change, that is going to be coming soon, it's not there yet, but it was a discussion we had with city council, I believe about a month and a half ago, and as well as planning commission, to kind of give us the go-ahead to finalize improving our parking standards, and possibly eliminating them, but still have. and possibly eliminating them, but still have a structure that we would review in the backend to approve or deny.
Yeah, and I'm referring to Section 526.
526.
And that's for PUD segment.
Yes, so the PUD, and we've typically had that authority with the Planning Commission, so that also is allowing the City Planner.
Thank you.
Yes.
There was a little section about unacceptable building materials, and I was hoping that that styrofoam that looks like fake wood.
Ephes, that's, that's been off, off forever, yes.
I am so glad because that looks so tacky.
Yeah, and that has been in our zoning ordinance that we adopted back in 2021, so.
Let's see. If you put in a swimming pool, it needs a permit. Is that something new?
Yeah, that is something new. Our building official wanted us to add that in there so that we can make sure that those are installed or removed in a safe manner and up to code.
Something about tattoo parlors?
Do you remember the section?
No.
Sorry, I, there was just so many changes, I can't memorize them all. Do you know which section that was by chance, Mayor?
It is Section B, wow, it's Section, I don't know, 544 DD 2.
Oh, that was probably just the reference then. Let me check. Let me just double check. Oh, that was just better defining what a tattoo parlor is. As you know, we do have one right on Coolidge, and they do like your eyebrow tattooing, which is called microblading, so we wanted to make sure that we included all of the things that fall under the tattoo services. So there's, you know, no question when somebody comes to us.
City Manager Tungay.
So Kim, I, I do think it's important, you know, I know, you know, of course, we in the administration and city council, we've had the advantage of being able to, you know, hear about all of these changes. But for the public, I, I do think it's important that they know how much goes into us arriving at these recommendations. So could you explain that process a little bit?
Yeah, so since we've adopted the new ordinances back in 2021, there has been occasion that we found errors within the zoning ordinance that we need corrected or an incorrect reference to a certain section that we also need to correct. Also, in conversations we have with business owners or residents that maybe need more clarification, and that is why we would add, say, a definition in there because it's something that somebody's questioned on numerous occasions and how to define it, so we make sure we add in those definitions just to make it very clear for everybody. Other things that come into play is as we're working with new developments, some things we see in the ordinance that might be over restrictive, and we don't think it's going to impact the community in a negative way, so we make the recommendation to the Planning Commission, which then goes now to council for approval of that change. And that is typically why we make all these changes over, usually about once or twice a year.
Did our attorney?
Yes, our attorney, yep, we went through several, several iterations with our attorney, and they did approve the final approval.
I did mention that I know we are a redevelopment-ready community, meaning projects can get going, get approvals quickly, get up and running, which is good.
Yep.
I'm not comfortable, and I let you know, that a lot of these decisions for the bigger projects are left up to the Planning Commission. While we do have representation on that commission, I think some projects should really come back to council. And you indicated that we can't have, we would lose our redevelopment-ready status if we were to bifurcate these a bit, but I have to say that I'm a little uncomfortable with, because we have big projects coming down the pike, and I think they require a bit of examination, like a little deeper examination. So that's my objection to leaving it all in the hands of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and like I had mentioned in the email, it is a requirement for being a redevelopment-ready community, and it does help us to attract new development into the community by being able to expedite things for a developer. Time is money. And typically in the past, I think we adopted that back in 2018, that we eliminated going to city council for the second approval. And any project that came to city council typically followed the order of the Planning Commission anyways because we do have two representative of council on the Planning Commission to voice that opinion when we're at the Planning Commission level. We can talk with City Manager Tungay and maybe have a session with city council and discuss it further, but that'll, I'll leave that up to City Manager Tungay.
Thank you.
The fact that we do have two representatives from council on there is comforting for me enough because it's not like we are bypassed.
Right, it's the mayor and the mayor pro temp at this point.
Yeah, and I would recommend to city council members, yeah, the city manager is also on there.
Oh, exactly, yes.
Yeah, and I would recommend we always send the packet out to every city council member for the Planning Commission. If there's something that you may be concerned of, reach out to the two Planning Commission members, the mayor and John Whitehead now, or City Manager Tungay.
Can I just, I, I just want to reemphasize something is that, so that was a statewide change. That wasn't something we just chose arbitrarily.
It wasn't mandated as a, as a state law, but to be part of redevelopment-ready community status. It was a requirement.
Yeah. So in other words, any community that wanted to be redevelopment-ready certified had to adhere to that standard.
That and many others, yes.
And many, many others did that same thing. So it wa, and I, I, I think you know this, it wasn't in an effort to usurp city council, it was just that that was the standard that the state had set for us.
Correct, yeah, and the state put, they actually adopted it from the Suburbs Alliance, that program, and they spent a lot of time researching and implementing that program and also administering it over these past few years. So we put a lot of work into being redevelopment-ready, and it's something that we're very proud of, and we know it has helped with getting development here.
And grants?
Yes, we get grants from them as well for technical assistance, which we plan to use for this year. We're going to apply to get a portion of our master plan done.
I think one of the things that drew us to get approved was that then we would qualify for these grants.
Absolutely.
Which grants do we qualify for?
They're technical assistance grants. For instance, we've done our housing studies with those. This year, like I mentioned, we're going to be doing our master plan, and that will go towards that. We also did it to rewrite our zoning ordinances.
And do the, do, because I know some of the redevelopment projects have benefited from our being a redevelopment-ready certified city.
Yeah, they provided architectural services to some of the developers on some of their projects as well.
And, and the fact that everyone on council gets the packet and can look at it ahead of time and bring up any objections, that seems to make it, everybody's sort of got their oar in the water that way.
And it's always a public meeting, so you can attend the Planning Commission.
Are there further questions about this ordinance? Are we ready to vote?
Just a clarification, with the parking, I know we did have that discussion a, a few meetings ago. That is not, we were just cleaning up language there. We're not going to actually remove those, even though I thought it was a good idea to put it in the hands of the developers, but that's not what we're doing at this time, correct?
Not at this time. We're going to come back to you later because that's going to require some more work on our end, attorney approvals, et cetera. So we want to make sure we put a lot of thought and effort into it and come with you, come to you with a clean change.
Okay, right. We want to do away with large, empty parking lots.
Yeah, yeah, but these, we've been kind of working on for the last eight months, and we really just wanted to bring them forward to get those done, and then we can just focus on that.
Right. If we're done with this issue, we can vote.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. City Manager Eric Tungay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm actually going to turn it back over for 10A1 to our esteemed colleague Kimberly Maroney.
Thank you, City Manager Tungay. We have in front of you an appro, approval for a proposed change order, number one, in the amount of $16,459.50 by Luigi Ferdinandi and Sons Cement Company in Roseville, Michigan for the 2025 Catch Basin Line Replacement Project, M779. The change order has to do with adding 15, 50 linear feet to repair some of the structures that we're anticipating having to do the repairs on during the life of this project. So we are asking for the proposed change order to be approved.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the proposed change order in the amount of $16,459.50 by Luigi Ferdinandi and Sons Cement Company of Roseville, Michigan for the 2025 Catch Basin Line Replacement Project, M779?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, 10B1, Finance Director Sandra Crawford, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, City Manager Tungay. Before you is a request to receive and approve exception recommendations regarding the special assessment districts. At the council meeting of April 7, 2025, city council adopted Special Assessment Resolution Number 9 to confirm the role with the exceptions of 42 which are attached, which were removed temporarily for further review. City council also adopted Special Assessment Resolution Number 10, setting the due date of May 21, 2025, together with a penalty of 10% for Special Assessment District Number 721 for delinquent utilities and Special Assessment District Number 724 for unpaid, unpaid property blight. The recommended action is that the unpaid invoices belonging to the following parcels be restored to the Special Assessment District Number 721 along with the original 10% penalty. 24741 Seneca, 13841 Ten Mile, 2351 Norwood, 23105 Church, 21590 Greenfield, 21801 Park Lawn, 26231 Coolidge, 22171 Kenosha, 14451 Elm, 21450 Ridgedale, 2761 Ridgedale, 22040 Dante, 23150 Kenosha, 23131 Park Lawn, 2760 Kipling, 13371 Kenwood, and 24300 Eastwood. And the following parcels be restored to the Special Assessment District Number 724 along with the original 10% penalty. 8400 Oak Park Boulevard, 23121 Republic, 8830 Kimberton, 8921 Kimberton, 10720 Troy, 22181 Morton. And the following parcels be removed from Special Assessment District Number 721 along with the original 10% penalty. 14561 Marlowe, 23830 Morton, 13620 Pearson, 14221 Kingston, 14041 Hart, 24701 West Hampton, 24280 West Hampton, 21941 Coolidge, 13650 Lincoln, 24117 Roanoke, 14301 Manhattan, 21921 Fern, 23150 Cloverlawn, 24290 Berkeley, 13310 Oak Crest, 23421 Cloverlawn, 13450 Rosemary, 23740 Wildwood. And the following parcel be removed from the Special Assessment District 724 along with the original 10% penalty, 15230 Oakwood Drive.
Is there a motion to request to receive and approve exception recommendations in the special assessment districts?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
So these are all people who objected to their assessment and the objection was granted, right?
Well, for the ones that we added back, we added back after we reviewed, and then for the ones that we asked to be removed after reviewing, that's that. So some got put back on, some got removed permanently.
Thank you. But all of them were studied?
Yes, they were all reviewed, all 40, what, we have 42 of them? Yeah, all 42.
People received letters or?
Yes, they all received letters, yep, and it should have been in the packet. I think it was about 50 letters that had went out.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, I, the next item is, is for me. It's the Elevate Oak Park update. I do want to get that update, but I do have a couple other things that aren't on the agenda I do want to mention. As far as the Elevate Oak Park update, you received quite a bit of information regarding the Event Hub. Obviously, we're very excited to get that project going. It's been a long time coming. We are also in the process of issuing bonds to begin the planning and construction of the community center. I do think that we have a really good chance of getting a ratings upgrade. We are going to be going through that process soon, though, and Director Crawford and I will be participating in many meetings to come with the rating agency to tell our story and make sure it paints our city in the best light possible. But it is my hope that we can get to a AA minus rating, which will be the first time maybe ever. I think the city's been rated that high, but it will also save our taxpayers, you know, as much as a half a point in interest on those bonds. So we're very excited about that. Are there any questions about the Elevate projects? There are.
What's our current bond rating?
Our current bond rating is A+.
Sounds better than AA minus.
Yeah. Well, it's a single, single A, so it's, we're, we're not in the, the AA category yet, but it'd be a major, we're A+ stable, as a matter of fact. And by the way, and I mentioned this to city council members before, but Moody's, we're not going to be using Moody's for our rating, but Moody's did just upgrade us a full from A2 to A3. So we're very, A3 to A2, we're very excited about, about that because Moody has, Moody's has never upgraded us in the time that I've been here, that I'm aware of. So we're very happy with that, and we see that as sort of a precursor to the standard and pores upgrade that we're going to be using to actually finance the debt, so. So that's the Elevate Oak Park stuff. Lots going on there, obviously. I do want to mention, and I, I will be giving the budget presentation on May 19, for members of the community, of course, staff, council members. Last Friday, we had a enjoyable full day of budget meetings. And the good news is that we have reached a balanced budget. And one fact that I keep coming back to, that I wanted to share with you, and I'll share again at the next city council meeting. In, after the crash of 2008, the city's taxable value was about $411 million. The taxable value prior to that was about $732 million. We are estimating the taxable value of the city for this year to be about $760 million, which has now more than recovered from where we were after the crash. And if you do the, you know, times two market rate valuation of that, the city's residents have gained approximately, and Sandra, you tell me if this number's off, but approximately $600 million in value in the form of equity appreciation in their property values. So we're very, very happy about that, and it now puts us to basically the, the start line because again, $732 million prior to the crash, so we're, we're back on track. So that, that statistic really, really stands out to me. It says so much about the progress that we've made. Also, I wanted to mention that we have a new magazine. I wanted to mention that we have a new magazine out. I'm not supposed to hold these up, but.
They are.
And part of what is on the back of the magazine is that we will be hosting the city's State of the City address. The mayor will be giving the State of the City address on behalf of the city council. I'll be saying a few words on behalf of the administration. And this is occurring on Tuesday, June 10th. There'll be a reception right here at six o'clock, and the program will be in council chambers here at seven o'clock. We'll be sharing some exciting updates and talking a little bit more about the budget. But the budget presentation will be on May 19th, right here in this room, at seven o'clock. And I'm just happy to report that we have another successful year of balanced budgets and improved ratings and so forth ahead of us. So, thank you very much, city council members. That completes the city manager report for this evening.
Amazing. Amazing, good to hear all the good news. And the ratings companies must have heard it too.
Yeah.
Next, we have call to the audience, do you have a spiel?
Yeah. This is the call to the audience section of the meeting. Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Oak Park does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person, while being heard at a city council meeting, may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal attacks on persons or institutions. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Thank you. Would you call the first speaker?
Yes, Ms. Waters.
Good afternoon. Okay. I live in Huntington Manor, or Palmer Woods Manor, any way you want to refer to it. And we have two exits and entrances. And both of those go directly to Ten Mile Road. And Ten Mile Road is very dangerous. People zoom by, they blow their horns, they get frustrated because they have to come up there and they have to go on that service drive. And we don't have any other way of getting out or in. So, I've contacted the code and then Sarah and a couple people here, and gave them the problem. And then I decided I better go to you before we go, if we have to another step. Okay, we need, when you come off of Ten Mile, there, the first light is Scotia. And Scotia has no, it has no stop. It's not synchronized to stop the traffic. So they fly from Coolidge straight through. And you better not be in the way. So we need that light so that traffic could stop. The second thing is that we have those little teeny cross, the service drive, yellow signs, and there's detour signs in front of them. So you don't even see that, that people have to walk.
What's the sign that you can't see?
The walk across sign. We used to have a light there, which was part of the freeway, because I was involved in it, and you took it down. So when we go, when it changes to the other side, we're going to have another problem because that light needs to be put back. But now it's just a little triangle sign that says crossing, and it has people crossing. And the detour sign is right in front of it. So you're coming down, flying from Coolidge, you don't even see that people walk. And they don't see our little stop signs where we go in and out. That has to be corrected. Now, Sarah said that, suggested, I'm so appreciative of her, that maybe you could put a machine that regulates the speed, let them know how fast they're going or something. And the third time, oh, Mr. Winslow had another thing he wanted to say.
Oh, hi, my name is T. Winslow. And I just wanted to give thanks to.
Kara.
Kara. Is she here?
Here? No, she's not here.
Okay, well, I gave a call, we had some patchwork done in my, in the manor, and I called one day and was fixing the next day. So I just want to say thanks to her. I just wanted to meet her, but she's not here, so I can't.
Thank you for taking your time to do that. It's, that means so much to people.
That's about it.
I had a quick question for you. You said that there was a light, was it at the entrance and exit of the?
Yeah. When the freeway was built, and they had the big display. And if you leave out the manor, and you want to go west on Ten Mile, you cross over the freeway, and there was a light there. There is no green space, you have to poke your head out. I was told once by somebody, well, there is a bit of accident yet. Well, that doesn't make sense. That needs to be corrected, I think that light needs to come back. I noticed that Oak Park put up two lights farther down on the west side of Oak Park. And one of them even blinks on and off. But our crossover sign, the light is gone. So it's very dangerous too.
Director DeCosta, could you speak to this?
Sure, thank you. So with regards to the traffic signal, when I first started in Oak Park, that traffic signal was here. The city does not regulate traffic signals. So we, contract with Oakland County, they take care of all of our traffic signals. I don't remember the exact year it was taken down, and I don't have the exact circumstances on me today, but Oakland County, the Road Commission for Oakland County takes care of all signals. While we can make that request to them and talk about it, we did do so a number of years ago when it was brought to our attention that there was being removed. And at that point, I don't think it warranted a traffic signal at, at that point. I'd be happy to reach out to them and call them again on your behalf, but I certainly can't make any promises. Like I said, that is the jurisdiction of Oakland County.
Yeah, I, I dealt with that back then too. And I was sent notice that they didn't, they also were not responsible for taking that light down. So.
They have regular meetings, and I would love if you attended one of them.
Then I will, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for caring and for speaking for your area.
You're welcome.
And I think this is a worse problem for these coming two years because of the closing of the expressway. So this is like a two-year problem, but we have to deal with it. Or before even, when the expressway was open, it was an issue?
Before, you mean the detour for the expressway? It was, restate that.
The, the speeding and the?
Oh yeah, it's forty miles an hour. But it wasn't so much traffic, and we had to negotiate it. Of course, the outlot, we don't want that open. So the only entrance and exit we have is directly onto the service drive.
Right. Okay, thank you for bringing this issue to our attention.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Tom? Is there a Tom?
Hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Manager, and City Council Members. My name's Tom, I'm from, I'm a resident of Ferndale. I'm, I live near Oak Park, kind of near the border. And my concerns are with regards to some of my neighbors in Oak Park who reside at the Jefferson Oaks apartment complex, and how that's being managed in general. The apartments are provided as low-income housing, which is great. And it, the city council has ensured us that it would bring in quality residents to those, to that building, not criminals or anyone who would disrupt our peaceful community in that area. And just a few weeks ago, you heard from one of my neighbors, who, about her package theft from her porch by a resident of those apartments. Now I'd like to share my perspective. This is what it's like living near the disruptive inhabitants of Jefferson Oaks apartments. In just the past few years, I've witnessed and reported from these apartments, vehicle break-ins, drug dealing with cars on Republic, noisy vehicle and loud systems, loud arguments from screaming inside the buildings to fighting on the outside of the buildings. A group of hooded individuals wearing full face coverings, pointing at houses while walking into Ferndale at one in the morning. Smash and grab suspects hopping our back fence, returning to the apartments. We witnessed one of my neighbor's package being stolen from her porch by a high school girl, who was a resident of the apartments, as I said before. We again reported that same girl, weeks later, stealing another package from a different neighbor's porch during their first week in their new home in Ferndale. Our neighbor also had their bike stolen from the garage by two boys who live in the apartments. On a walk, we were stalked, me and my partner, by three teens dressed in all black with full face coverings. During just this last week of Easter, police responded to a screaming fistfight between two mothers and another altercation outside of the apartments, as well as a fire alarm, which happens quite frequently. We counted eighteen cop cars, just in a few hours on Easter. Now there's an unhinged man from the apartments who is often outside screaming and threatening random people. And just this weekend, he threatened to punch a lawn care worker from my front lawn. Where this is all happening, there's a playground frequented by dozens of unsupervised children. At this playground, there's no trash can, and as such, there's a constant littering problem at the apartments. The wind blows their litter into our yards, where we, as Ferndale residents, have to pick up their trash. We're fed up and considered moving from Ferndale due to these issues alone. So instead of reacting by continuing to call the police, I'm coming to you to request that you insist that changes be made with regard to the disruption and crime at the Jefferson Oaks apartments. More needs to be done to ensure that we live in a safe and peaceful neighborhood. And you should not let these individuals taint your fine city of Oak Park and detract from these improvements that you're making in your role as city council members. Thank you again for your time and attention.
Thank you for your well-prepared remarks, and we will look into this, thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Tungate, would you like to?
Yes, Tom, thank you for, for your input. So, first, if you have an incident, like some of the ones you just described, obviously you should call Public Safety, okay?
Yes, we do.
But then, the other thing I wanted to mention is that Director Maroni, sitting behind you, recently commissioned a meeting with the management company of Jefferson Oaks. And we addressed, in that meeting, we addressed many of the concerns that you just laid out.
That's great.
We have been promised change.
Awesome.
So right now, we are in the process of evaluating whether or not that change is taking root. Do you want to add to that, Kim?
The meeting that City Manager Tungate mentioned, we did request that they replace the manager that was on site there, because she was not effective. And they just recently replaced her. And I'm working on setting up a meeting with Public Safety and myself to sit down with the new management, and hopefully that we can get things rectified, so. Hopefully, good news to come.
Great, thank you so much.
Because people who are causing problems are supposed to lose their lease.
Right, exactly.
Because we were told that it was, that there were six hundred applicants for sixty places, and they were going to pick the best. And if they aren't, there are plenty of people waiting in line.
And they need help.
And they, amen, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Solomon Zeiler?
Good evening, Councilman. I live at 26061 Ratcliffe Place in Oak Park. I think we were just notified that payments of the sidewalk is coming due. Community between Marlowe Place and Stratford Place wants to know when is the repairs going to be done on the sidewalks that have to be done. There's a lot of problems during the winter because of this new cement that was laid. I don't know what it's called, but the approaches from the street to the sidewalks are very bad angles that when they plow the snow, we can't get across the street because it blocks the walkway from the sidewalk to the street. After they plow it, it accumulates a lot of ice and water. People have fallen. And there, again, I mentioned this once before, that on Marlowe Place and Lincoln, especially when it rains, the sewer backs up pretty, pretty wide, and it travels all the way into Lincoln. Also, people were complaining about the little island where you have your light for people to cross. Part of this crossing is in the street. It's actually in the street, it's a circle that's sitting in the street. There's not much street left because of this curve that's, that's put in. We know it's dangerous, we don't know why it's there. And we'd like the city council to take a look at it and see what they can do. The more interested is to find out is when they're going to do the repairs on the sidewalks.
Thank you. And would you see Director Kim Maroni, please? Just to let you know about the flooding in the streets, Oak Park was built on a swamp, and so the original engineers engineered it on purpose so that when there's heavy rain, it collects in the street. So that's intentional. The street flooding is intentional. It is supposed to keep that water from always going into your basement. The holes are made small on purpose, so the flooding is not a mistake, it is by design.
So that means Ratcliffe Place, when it rains, seven houses, in the front in the streets, are two and a half feet of water sitting in the street. That's basically what you're trying to tell us.
Two and a half feet of water. Speak to Director Maroni.
I mean, it's funny to say, but people bring out canoes. We have video and pictures of it. I mean, I think you're setting yourself up for a sinkhole. If you want to take the chance, go right ahead. But the water accumulation when it rains on our block is terrible. And then I just found out recently that we're considered the, what's the name of this, the, where it accumulates most of the water, and we're the last ones between three blocks, they open up the drains. And last time it happened, I guess they brought somebody out to open up the drains after everybody else was cleared. And we told them not to open up the drains, because if they open it with so much water in the street, half, half that block will flood in their basements. So, you can't keep it open, you can't keep it closed. So what are we supposed to do?
Speak to the director.
Speak to the girl.
Okay. I just, I just want to add one thing, since I live in this neighborhood. I'm always cleaning out the grates because there are bottles stuck there and pieces of plastic. They hold up the drainage. They just do, and nobody does this when they're walking by. We have. It does, but. Still, I mean, it's a problem that people don't pick up trash, because it does collect in these grates.
Okay, we need.
Anyway, sorry.
We need to stop the cross-talk, thank you, thank you for coming. Anyone else? Let's see, call to the council. Another. Sure, come on down.
Tori Webster, business owner at 8430 and 8440 West Nine Mile. I was listening to the plan to reevaluate parking for businesses. And I just wanted to put some input in on that as a business owner and a resident of Oak Park. I, I know you guys are, but I really want this looked into very carefully, into very carefully. It was a pain for me when I was opening my daycare, that parking situation, and I had to work hard to figure it out, to make sure I had adequate parking. My concern is, I'm very happy with all the businesses that's joined me. Because when I got on Nine Mile, no one was there, I'm happy. But I would also like us to be mindful of it not affecting the residents that, you know, we're neighboring with on these streets. And also that it's not harming the businesses that are there, like, my parking lot is essentially taken over, especially during the summer, by the Chinese restaurant next door. So I just want us to be mindful of how eliminating or reducing those parking spaces can affect other smaller businesses. I know we have a lot of large lots, but I just want us to make sure it's not crossing over into larger businesses with larger capacities, affecting us smaller businesses that have smaller lots where our clients can't get parking at our establishments because the numbers were so greatly reduced for what's required for other businesses.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input, thank you. So, last week, we talked about the girls who petitioned the mayor to get seating in the park so that they could do their homework on a table, picnic tables. And they were put in. Director DeCosta put them in. And we got a thank you note and baked goods from the girls. So, the, dear Madam Mayor, thank you so much for following through with our request in getting us picnic tables in the park. Thank you for all your tireless dedication to the residents of Oak Park. We are looking forward to spending time, enjoying the beautiful weather, with good memories spent on the Oak Park picnic tables. Sincerely, Leah, Mousha, and Noni. And they are students from Hiam Muska High School. So, thanks for your thanks. An Oak Park resident from long ago, Jeffrey Seller, wrote a book about his experiences growing up and finding himself in the theater. So, it's called Theater Kid: A Broadway Memoir. And Jeffrey lived in Oak Park for, when he was a kid. And so, that, see, his memory sort of started back there. And he had a lot of challenges. He was a gay kid when that wasn't okay back then. He was adopted, which always gives you kind of a crisis about who you are. He was a poor kid. And having gone through a session of poverty myself, I know that, as Tevye said, it's not a crime to be poor, but then again, it's no great honor either. And there are issues from that that a lot of people are facing. And I found it, listening to him. And I understand that the book is coming out very soon. He went from a kid who felt he didn't belong anywhere. And in his Sunday School, they had Purim play. And he loved being in that little play and realized that theater was something where he really felt at home. And I just find his story inspiring. And he is speaking tomorrow night, I think, at the Jewish Center in, on Fifteen Mile Road, and signing his books. Kids learning sports are kind of a wonderful thing to, a place to belong, even if you're not wonderful at it. And there's a picture of a little boy whose father told him, let's see... Benny, do you have that picture of the little boy and the ball? His father said, "Keep your eye on the ball." So, there, there he is with his eye on the ball, like he was told. And then, just other adorable stories. When my grandson was four, and their size-small T-shirts came down below their knees, the first couple kids strike out. The next kid makes it to first base. Well, first base looks kind of like the sit-upon that you get when you go to preschool. So, he sat crisscross applesauce and sat up and listened really well on first base. Then, another couple kids go by. A kid gets a hit, and he decides he is going to take a shortcut. He ran directly to second base. Then, this is all in the same game. Then, a little down the way, the coaches' kid gets up. The coaches' kid knows how to hit a T-ball, you know, off the tee. And he hits a good one. And then, his dad must have said, "Wherever you are in the field, chase that ball." He went out and chased the ball that he just hit. I love little kids learning sports. And that's happening in our community center with all our little teams that are going on. It's a good way for kids to feel like they belong. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. And congratulations again on the high honor. Thanks for being part of our city and helping us. I know you do a lot of sponsorships, and it's very meaningful. Since, I don't, I think the sneak peek of the Oak Park Farmers Market is before our next meeting. So, that's on the 18th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Please come to the community center and check out some vendors for the season. They'll have baked goods, other, they'll have plants, starter plants, and you can get started on the season. And this year's going to be better than last year. It keeps getting better and better. And happy Mother's Day to all of you who celebrate.
Thank you. Beautiful. Councilmember Stephanie Crawford.
Did you forget my name yet?
I did. I was just gone.
I just want to highlight our Oak Park Recycling and Environmental Conservation Commission. They're very busy. Thursday, May 15th, we're going to have Rain Barrel 101 Seminar. So, it's going to be in the Oak Park Community Center. It is...
What time?
7:00 PM. And then, on the 18th, we are, that commission is sponsoring Oak Park Cleans Up. That's going to be Sunday, May 18th, at noon. And come on out. We're inviting all of the residents, your friends and neighbors. We're going to clean up Oak Park this year. The annual citywide cleanup will be in Shepherd Park. That's at noon. Meeting up at Pavilion 2. So, meet in the east parking lot off of North Field. No registration. We'll even give you gloves. And then, everyone should gear up for our Beautification Advisory Commission is having their annual spring flower sale. I love that sale. It's from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's on May 25th. And that's going to be at the Oak Park Community Center. We'd like everyone to come out that day and support. Get ready to get your perennials, geraniums, baskets, all of that, all of that good stuff. And a happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. And anyone celebrating Cinco de Mayo today, we want you to have fun, but be safe.
All the, just an addendum to that. All the mothers, all the aunts, all the older sisters, all the neighbors, anyone who makes a difference in the life of a child, we celebrate you on Mother's Day.
We do.
There being nothing further, no further business to come before the council. We are adjourned.
We've got to have some more ladies' night.